Community for All, and as he speak, he walks in. And our mission statement that supports that is that the school district of Milton, in partnership with our community, prepare our students for lifetime readiness by providing opportunity, achievement, and community for all. That note, we'll call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 13th, 2025. Please join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So you nailed the mission and the vision, you messed up the flag. Sorry about that. Rich, are you aware of any changes we need for the agenda?
We emailed out to the board some additional attachments that are now in board docs, but no changes to the agenda.
All right. Make a motion to approve the agenda, since I have a second. Thank you. Rich's motion is seconded by Ed to approve our agenda as you see it. Questions from anyone? And all in favor of that, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that clearly passes. Minutes from our previous meeting are included in board docs as usual.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on December 9th, 2024, as presented. Second.
Thank you. Tracy's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our previous meeting minutes. Does anyone have questions on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Vouchers follow. It's all right. Doesn't have to be John, someone close to him.
Here we go. I'll move to approve the general checking account vouchers totaling
It's up here, John.
$1,284,889.19, as presented.
I'll second.
John's motion is seconded by Annette to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount that's up on our screen and that John just shared with us. Questions from anybody?
I just want to point out for anyone who had looked at the vouchers and had questions, thanks to Brock and to Rich for giving me some guidance on the, some of the charges, the main one being the staging, the rigging on the main theatrical stage, and the district looking after the safety of our students to make sure that that was taken care of. So, thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, comment follows next. I picked up the sheet on the way in, we had no one sign up to share with us, so we'll go past that. I want to acknowledge and welcome our student reps, we'll hear from them at the second meeting of the month, so thank you for joining us. And that brings us up to Rich, superintendent update.
Yeah, we are, today was our week school day back after the holiday break, and we have a number of things to highlight that have happened over the last week and a half or so, and then I want to highlight a few things that are coming up too. We have two math teams that traveled to UW Whitewater, competing in the regional math meet. There was a fifth and sixth grade team and a seventh and eighth grade team. Both of those teams finished first place overall in their competitions, and they were in the place at the Mega Math Meet in Madison in May. Individual awards were also handed out to the top two scorers at each grade level, and we had a top scorer in grade five, Levi Keen, and also second place in grade five, Matt Yon. The top scorer overall for grade six was Jason Langer. The second highest scorer overall was on our seventh grade team, Marie Kim, and the top scorer overall from the group from the eighth grade was also one of our students, Luke Nicholson. So outstanding showing by our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math leads, and we wish them the best of luck at the upcoming event in May. Our show choir got their season started, they competed in Alaska this past weekend. We have two show choirs that compete at events. Octave Above was the first runner-up in their division, and Correlation was the fourth runner-up of 12 teams in their division. This Saturday, the high school hosts the Rock Show Choir Invitational. I know many of you have attended that in the past, there are, this year, there are 24 show choir groups from across the region that will perform. It's one of the largest events that we host each year in our district. We invite staff members and community members to come watch these incredible performances. Ticketing and schedule information will be available on our district's social media in the next couple days, so look for information there. And then a couple things that are coming up. On Wednesday, Milton High School is holding its annual Planning Your Future at MHS Beyond event for ninth through 11th grade students. It was created, as you know, it was created in response to feedback from students and parents, and it gives students an opportunity to plan out their high school experiments, both academic and any extracurricular opportunities that they're interested in, and it also is a chance for our staff to share different opportunities that are available for students and set, help set them up for post-graduation success. Opening up this week is 4K kindergarten enrollment, so it's always a good time for us to get a better idea on what enrollment is going to look like for 4K in kindergarten. We encourage families to enroll as soon as possible because we use those early enrollment numbers to determine staffing for the coming year. And we again will have reminders on social media in the coming days about that enrollment in the process, and if there are questions, we encourage folks to reach out to Dean Olson, who is our family enrollment coordinator. And then our Wall of Honor nominations are open right now, and they're accepted through January 31st, so this is for next fall's inductees into our Wall of Honor. This will be the third inductee class, and it's always an exciting time in the fall when you get to honor former staff members and former parents, Milton High School alumni, and community members for their outstanding achievements. And then the last thing that I wanted to highlight is, back in the summer, in late July and into early August, we talked about some changes to the federal Title IX requirements, and I just wanted to give the board an update on that because last week on January 9th, there was a federal court case in Kansas regarding Title IX. We're having discussions with legal counsel about next steps based on this court case, and Neola is also involved in planning on potential changes to policy. We should know more for the next board meeting, and then we have a policy committee meeting coming up on January 29th where if we do need to update any policies based on this new information, we can bring those to the board through the policy committee. That concludes everything today.
Great. Questions for Rich at all? Excellent, excellent, good to hear. Okay, we'll roll on. Three on the agenda is the Data Workshop Report, I see that has my name attached to it, so I'm going to summarize for us. We met back in the middle of December, what has become kind of a semi-annual gathering now. The entire board was joined by administration and building principals and some other folks from our district to sort of do a deep dive, if you will, into lots of the numbers, hence Data Workshop. Kind of broken up into about three areas. There's certainly academic data, performance data, testing data, et cetera, that we look at. There's SEL data that's shared by our student services folks relative to the input we get from our staff and students, and then sometimes community survey data is welded into all of that too. So I, on behalf of the board, would like to thank the folks that dive into all that data and present it to us. While it's somewhat easy to get lost in the numbers, they do a wonderful job of sort of sorting that, organizing it, giving us something meaningful that we can look at, in spite of our friends at DPI continually changing the metric to make it harder to compare, such that everybody that's given numbers, right, the propensity is to compare. How are we doing, what did we do last year, et cetera, et cetera. And to the degree that we can do that, we look at trends, and I gotta say that we are on an upward plane in Milton, academic especially. The achievement of our kids and students continues to impress, to amaze us, et cetera, so we are very, very thrilled with that. It does highlight areas that we would like our students to do better, and I'm sure our students would like to also. And administration and building folks did a wonderful job of telling us exactly how they use that data to implement action plans that will address both those and the needs of all of our kids. So, like I said, the board was incredibly impressed, just a very, very gratifying exercise to walk through. Certainly, we're not perfect, we've got areas we can improve on, we're well aware of those, and plans are in place to do that, but much success to be celebrated across all the grade levels and across all of our kids. I don't know if any of the board members had other thoughts they wanted to share, but that's my synopsis. Only we sort of morphed it into a little bit of a Christmas gift, we had a few snacks. Anybody else feedback wise?
I would like to echo what you said, I mean, the amount of time and effort and energy that the administration and principals and staff put into being able to communicate to a group of folks that may not be as educated on the details of the data was very appreciated, and not only celebrating the wins, but then focusing, letting us know how we're going to target some of the areas that we need to develop on, and how the use of the P-time is being targeted. That's very helpful for us to know that we're focused on not only our students' work hours as well, so thank you all for the time and energy.
All right, anybody else, I guess we can move on. Through business, A, as Julia is making her way up, we are going to have a discussion, but not action. This is a somewhat new topic, and we need to get a little background and some history and perspective, and Julia's going to share with us 2025-26, open enrollment space limitations potentially.
Yes.
It's on one, I'm hearing this.
All right, so, um, who's coming here?
I have the show.
All right. So this is just a presentation tonight. You received it on Friday, just to kind of give you a little bit of a time to kind of digest the information, but it is new for us, but it's not new for our surrounding districts or our state. It is a state statute, and every January, we do define space limitations, but we have not had any limitations so far in Milton. So I'm just presenting on what would potentially be our recommendation for the next board meeting in January, and I just want to kind of ground us in our discussion before I talk about what's going to be in this presentation for those who haven't seen it. So school boards are required to designate spaces available for general and and specialized students in the January school board meeting, and then if they do define space limitations, there has to be in policy some criteria outlined for those limitations. So in the presentation tonight, you're going to see some historical data, current enrollment and staffing, some recommended caseload ratios, and then a specific recommendation, again, not for action tonight, but for a future board meeting meeting. Okay, so the goal is to ensure that we can continue to maintain a high level of services for our students while also managing our resources that we have available for resident students. Okay, so determining, if we can go back one. Thank you. So criteria for determining space, so this is just a reminder, school boards are required to designate space availability in the January board meeting, and then the board must specify criteria in the open enrollment policy, which I have linked in a couple slides. But if we do set space limitations in criteria, some of those limitations are bullet pointed there. So we look at staff teacher ratio, which we talk about class sizes and projection over time, and then if we look at special ed in particular, we look at caseload ratios, certain program options that we offer, type of services, like contracted services, OT, PT, speech, vision, that sort of thing. All right, I can roll on there. So here's our current policy linked for those that have read it. So there is some of the language already in there, but it just basically says if the board determines space availability, and those have to be designated in the board minutes in the January meeting. So we don't have anything designated, but we do have the language already in policy. We do have to specify if we do set space limitations, what, if there is a waitlist, what that waitlist would be, and how folks access it who do apply for open enrollment to our district. Then it establishes again that criteria for what space limitations would be. DPI does not provide a recommendation on this, this is up to school districts and school boards. They do have kind of a recommendation on a way to evaluate caseloads, but they don't come out and say this is our recommended caseload. So we, as school districts and directors, have to look at surrounding districts, we have to look at historical caseload information, and just kind of take that all into consideration when making a recommendation for the board. The other important thing to note, if we do apply a limitation, DPI really would only deny if there's appeal that happens, like if we deny open enrollment and apparent appeals, DPI will look at the policy and make sure that we follow the policy, and that's the only way that appeals really get turned over, is if school districts don't follow their policies, that's right. Okay. Keep rolling. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to get into current caseload ratios of enrollment. So this is broken apart by our ages and what we have for programs that we offer, and then contracted services. So early childhood is any student ages three to five that we provide services for in our district. So this reads our early childhood program, we have two designated staff with 23 currently enrolled with a ratio of about 1 to 11 and a half. Now, we kind of divide up our early childhood across the 4K3 schools, not all of them, but majority of them, so this is just an average of those individuals that provide the majority of these EC services, that's what that looks like. Now, vision impairment and deaf and hard of hearing, we don't have people on our staff currently who provide services for vision impairment and deaf and hard of hearing. I contract out for those services, so the caseloads, we just don't have enough students to have somebody that's on our payroll, but we do contract out for those services. And then I kind of divided it out by K5 and 68, because when we look at the surrounding school districts, the majority of the districts, the schools of Wisconsin, that's how they define elementary, middle, and high, so that's what I did there. So again, it's our current enrollment, our current staff, and then the ratios. Okay? Then I wanted to give you a historical perspective on evaluations. So every year, we have evaluations that happen throughout the year. So this graph is just basically showing historical perspective from 2020 to 2024, of how many initial evaluations there were in a school year, and of those evaluations, how many did not qualify. So the main takeaway here, did not qualify just means a student was not found eligible for special ed services, sorry. So the main takeaway here is that a majority of the students that we evaluate do qualify for special education services. We can't hypothesize what that's going to look like from year to year besides having the averages that we have right here. So really, just the main takeaway is our resident students, there's a high likelihood that we'll have quite a few who do need services in any given school year, we just can't always project what that looks like. So that's where it comes down to the resources piece that I talked about, to just know if we have enough resources to meet the needs of our resident students. Does that part make sense? Okay. All right, and then special education trends, so this is just really a quick look at what we have seen in the past six years. So in the bottom graph there, 1920, all the way to our current special ed enrollment. So currently, we have 445 students who are students with disability in our district, and that's about 12.8%. The state average now is about 14 to 15%. About five years ago, it was between 12 and 13%, so we've always kind of hovered around that state average, lower now than before, but really, the historical piece is we've kind of always hovered around that 440 to 450 range. So we're not going down. The next slide is really just looking at our open enrollment trends, so that's kind of why some of the conversation more recently around why are we looking at potentially setting space limitations? So this is again a historical perspective of 1920 all the way to the current school year. 1920, we had about 5% of our students with disabilities were students who are open enrolled to Milton, and now we have 11.5% of our students of our total students with disabilities, that 445, 11% of those are students who are open enrolled, so about currently 51 students. And that's as of 12/2024. Okay? Okay, and then this is the recommended, the recommended caseload ratios for 25 to 26. So I got these recommended ratios from, again, averaging our historical caseload over time, looking at comparative data from our resident districts and the Badger Conference districts, because oftentimes we'll compare ourselves to both, what are we seeing around our area, and what are we seeing within the Badger Conference? And then took into consideration some of the DPI considerations. Now again, they're very broad, they will not come out and say this is what we recommend for school districts that had for a ratio for how many students, how many special ed teachers, and how many students with IEPs. So it's just a compilation of all of that data. So those are what I would recommend for moving into 25 to 26. So, for example, early childhood, one special ed teacher to every 10 early childhood students. Okay? And that's how we read that slide. Now, if I just took what I would recommend as 25 to 26 ratios and compare it to what we have currently, so our current staff rolled over to 25 to 26, and then we roll up our enrollment for 25 to 26, the third column there, the staff to student ratio, that's just at a quick glance, we'd already be over a certain threshold of what we would say is a recommended caseload at those, at each of those levels. So that's just kind of at a quick glance. Okay, and these next three slides are what we would be considering bringing to the board at the end of the month. So it's going to go through what we have for projected enrollment, which I just went over, how many staff we have projected for next year, what the projected ratio would be if we have that number plus the amount of staff, and then I just added the column of what we would recommend, so that we can easily see whether or not we have space. So that's how these next few slides read. Now, we do have to take into consideration move-ins. So every year, on average, we get about 30 new students in our district that have IEPs. They could have speech and language only needs, or they could have very complex needs that come with a significant amount of paraprofessional support, we don't know, but around 30 every year are what we have projected, or what we have seen in our trends. So I just took an average of three students in each of the categories, except for speech and language only, because we do see a higher number of speech and language only students who move in and out of school districts. And then I also took into consideration, remember the initial evaluation trends that we talked about, how the majority of the initial evaluations that we have in our district do end up qualifying for services, we took that into consideration too. So that's how we got whatever the current number was, plus three spots of that total bolded number, divided by the projected staff for next year to get a projected ratio. So that projected ratio was above the recommended ratio, that's how we determine whether or not there would be space available for new students who are opening enrollment into our district. Does all of that make sense? Want to go to the next steps? So the next steps would just be having a discussion about this option presentation recommendation, and then coming back to the next board meeting with a memo created outlining how we would be determining the spaces available for special education and/or general education if we want to have that conversation. And then we would look to update the board policy to include determinations on if we do meet the, no space available, and we have students who do want to open enroll, how do we then create a waitlist and then determine who off that waitlist would be, you know, next available if the space does become open in our district? And then that's just a draft open enrollment recommendation, so that's what would be presented for action. So given the outline of the criteria, the only available spots that we would have would be in our middle school more complex needs program, and that would be two spots available based on the recommended ratio of one to seven. Next year would have been, be around one to four, if we do kind of add in that three move-in slash somebody could qualify for services. Okay? This is just a reminder, so even if we don't say that we have space available, we still have the obligation to review every IEP, and this is what we do now. We review the IEP for a student who puts, or for a family who has applied for open enrollment, and we determine if we have the resources available. So even though we don't have space limitations, if we can't provide a program that is written into an IEP for a student who is a non-resident student, we still have the ability to deny that application. There are, there's only a few reasons that you would deny, one of which is habitual truancy in the resident district, one is an expulsion order, and one is a special ed program that we don't have available. So for example, if there is a student who was a non-resident student that applies for open enrollment and they need a self-contained EBD classroom, we don't have that program in Milton, and so we could deny the application based on that, but it has to be a program that we don't currently have. So this space limitation would allow us to deny applications based on no space available in our current programs that we offer. That's the difference. So we have, we've always had the availability to do this, but just with certain limitations. Okay? All right. I think that's it. Lot of information.
One thing I want to share before we have the board go into questions is that the current policy is also listed in board docs, and it's listed as a draft because we do have about midway through that policy, some language that's highlighted in green that would be the, excuse me, that would be the recommended update to this policy if the board approves the changes at our next board meeting.
And some districts do have a random selection in their board policies, saying those spots will be randomly selected, and then that person will be identified, and then they have a criteria to follow if they don't, if they don't accept that open enrollment at a certain time, they move to the next person. So our policy currently, as recommended, would be on a first come, first served basis. The other thing that I did not say that I want to go over is that the current students, those 51 students that we currently have open enrolled into our district, we would look to keep those students within our district. They have, some of them have been here their entire educational career, and we would look to kind of grandfather those students, and so it's just looking at future resources and allocations for determining whether or not we can meet current students' needs. So, question. Tracy?
I think if there's mentioning, because I had this conversation with Rich, we can talk about this independent of the open, of the general ed, space limitations, et cetera.
Yes.
So we can separate space needs, special ed, and general ed?
Correct, and if you, so I looked at the entire Badger Conference space limitations, and the majority do put a limitation on general ed and special ed, and only a few, I think four of them were just special ed only limitations, but all of them had some sort of a limitation on there.
Okay, so following on to that was one of my questions, how do you determine, so if
How do you determine, so if a student is enrolling as a gen ed open enrollment, and then they come in and a team that they have special education needs, is it only if they have a current IEP written that they wouldn't qualify?
Say that question one more time.
So if it's just a general, because we're not limiting, we're not limiting general?
Oh, if a student is referred for special education, they do qualify within the school year?
Yes.
Yeah, so they come in as a, as a student without an IEP?
Yes.
Correct. So then we would determine that if we had space available, whenever they qualify for, if we have space available, then they would stay our student. If we determine that there is no space available, then they would go back to the resident district. And that is something that happens often in school districts, where we would have to be super transparent and upfront during the evaluation process. And sometimes what happens around our, our area or within districts is they will, they will say then, I don't, I don't want the services. I want to stay in the school district. But then it comes down to meeting the child's needs and really having a conversation about providing the support that's needed for them to be successful in their, in their educational career. So those are conversations that are had often, but yes, that's what would happen. If we have space available, awesome. If we have identified that we don't have space available, then they would be served in their resident district.
Thank you. Does there have to be something?
Wait, can I have a follow-up?
Oh, absolutely.
When you jump to the?
Yeah.
So if they are identified and we have a waitlist?
Yes.
Do they have to then go into the waitlist and be part of the lottery? Or do they get preference because they're only here?
They would get, well, it depends if there's space available. Which, yes, I see what you're saying. So if there, if there is space available, then likely that wait, if we already had a waitlist, those would already have been filled. But if we don't have a waitlist and there is space available, then, then they would be able to stay.
So they couldn't bump somebody up the list?
No. I don't think I outlined that, but that would be something to think through.
Okay.
Bumping some, I see what you're saying. So let me write that down, because I don't, I don't think we talked through that scenario.
So like you said, jumping the line would be a general open enrollment and then determining if there's an IEP need. Okay. My next question, and I thank you for the questions that you guys sent. I just thought of some as you were going through them. Do we have to write into the policy something about the currently matriculated students?
Do you write something in the policy?
For the grandfathered students?
Um, they, we would, yes.
Okay, so that would be written in the policy, okay. Do we foresee any reverse enrollment from the other districts back? So do we have any open enrolled out students that if we are no longer accepting open enrolled in, that other districts may have to turn off their open enrollment? And then they would then return resident Milton students to Milton? Did I say that right?
Um, most of the districts around us have also grandfathered the students who are already open enrolled in. They keep those students. Sometimes we'll see, like, if there's a natural progression to another school. Like, let's say they were a non-resident student in a school district. They qualified for services, and then they moved from elementary to middle school. Some district policies will say when you move to the next natural transition, like a new school, they would then get returned to their resident district. But not all school districts policies say that. That's just an example of what can happen. So it would vary. But most districts would grandfather those students who are already there for their educational career.
Got you. And that's our intent, is if they're going from north side to the middle school, we're not going to reevaluate if they're already in their?
That is our intent, to keep, to keep the students that we currently have.
Yes, got you. You had mentioned during the presentation that you said about 30 come in on an annual basis. How many go out?
Hmm.
I'm just out of curiosity.
Students who open enroll out? We do have that information. I can get you that information.
Okay. And again, it was just more of curiosity, because obviously that's a lot.
Just with disabilities?
Yeah, to have that.
Wasn't it 51 that come in?
51 are here this year.
This year.
But you're wondering how many of our resident students are open enrolled out to other districts?
Yes.
And the 30 that Julia spoke to earlier is approximately the number of current students that we have that get assessed during the year and qualify for services.
But then how many do we have that, like, and I think more of my question is, like, like, I guess seniors, like seniors who move out of the program, like, just to save free, because if we have 30 that come in annually, I think they call them move-ins.
Yes, just students who move into our district who are residents.
Who are residents.
Yes, we are obligated to provide services for regardless of what the services are.
Yes, okay. That's all I needed, thank you.
So that was just an average. I tried to give a best guess so that we could accurately project from year to year. It's hard, but.
Oh, I understand, I respect that. Just two more quick ones. The middle school, so there said there's two.
Two spots available.
Two spots available. But then if those students then move on, do they not butt up against the non-open spaces in the next grades?
Well, we would have to determine those spaces every year. So depending on move-ins, move-outs, resident students who no longer are resident students, all of that would have to be looked at on an annual basis to accurately best determine space available. It's hard to project when you move from one school to the next without looking at evaluations and such.
So is the intent to say that there is no space? Or are we going to try to fill those two spaces in middle school? That's one part.
We would not, we would not look to fill them, but we would have the capacity to meet the needs if we do have two more students with complex needs move into that program.
Understood. Thank you for putting all of this together and have a, for all of our staff, our specialized staff, I know they put a lot of work in 445 IEPs every year. It's a lot, so thank you, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Just a quick question. The 51 students, are they factored into the projected ratio? Or are they?
They are factored into the projected ratio for next year, yes. Keeping everybody we currently have, yep.
Julia, thanks for the info.
Yep.
To clarify Tracy's initial question, so say someone's identified in the middle of the year.
Yes.
An open enrolled student identified, and we can't meet their needs. In the middle of the year, or whenever that determination is made, then they be sent back to their home district?
To the resident district.
So whatever that is.
Correct.
Or are they confused to refuse services?
They can, and people do have that conversation with the evaluation team. And then it's really about the meeting the needs of the students and having some hard conversations, because truly as educators, like, our heart is with making sure that we meet the needs of kids and that it sometimes, these conversations don't feel good. But it's truly about the resources that we have available and having, making sure that we can meet the needs of kids. So if that's where the conversation is grounded, hopefully, families can understand that and want to do what's best to make sure that their students' needs are met. But sometimes that doesn't happen, and that's, that's their right and their fair.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thanks for the info. I'm really torn on this subject.
Yeah.
I understand our staffing challenges, and I know it's nothing new, and it's been getting worse.
Yeah.
But I also think of our stated vision to have opportunities for all. You know, ratio can be changed in two ways. We could increase staff numbers, or we could decrease school numbers.
Yes.
I guess, do we have enough staff? Professional staff, support staff? And do those staff have all the resources that they need to meet the needs of those students?
Yes, when I look at staffing projections in the spring, because that's really when we analyze what we need for the following year, just like we do for classroom teachers. These are the start of those conversations, in January, February, March, and then we start to make those recommendations for future FTE that we'll bring to the board for the spring. So when I make those projections in the spring, I feel confident that with the numbers that we have, we can meet the needs of students and staff have what they need to be successful. Knowing that our evaluations are high and that we have little, little skeezy and porkey kind of coming out of the woodworks, which is not a Milton problem, it's just, it is everywhere right now. And knowing that our, our kids are showing up a little bit differently than they have in the past five years, it's hard to say that we would keep the current ratio that we have right now. We have some high numbers. And it's not everywhere, but it's in some schools more than others. And so I would likely look to do the same process that I did last year, and that's evaluate kind of the, what does it all feel like? Not just a number on a page, but what does it feel like? And how are our staff impacted? And whom am I providing more support and resources to at which schools? And, and kind of how can we find that balance with also being visibly responsible? Special education is not the only program that has to be funded in our school district, and it's a, it's a give and take with interventionists and with our coaches and everything that impacts a school district in a positive way. So I would look to do the same process. But yes, it's a matter of, do we hire more people so that we can keep open enrollment open? Or do we put space limitations and try to kind of keep the ratios of current staff where they are? But I hear you, it's, it's a hard decision. Like I said, as educators, we make decisions with our heart sometimes. And, and I understand that that is a hard thing for us to think about, turning somebody away potentially, because that's never what our intent is. But there's a balance, and sometimes we have to make those hard decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing how you feel about that, Rick.
And I understand you just said we've never had to do this before?
We have never chosen to do this before.
Never chosen to do this before?
We have to do it every January. But in the minutes, it just says we will have no limitations, or however the, the recommendation is read.
Should we choose to do this in the next, would metrics be part of next year at this time? So without records of, I don't think we actually have to.
Yeah, we, we could talk about that, absolutely.
I think that'll do. I took that as a record, I can only get some one or one hundred.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Julia? See you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to me, a new business, as Mr., who's coming up, Tara probably, huh? This involves both, but we have an extended field trip request that we need to modify. So Tara's going to share with us what exactly they would like us to do.
Yeah, the high school portion of this trip has already been approved. Since that approval, the middle school had explored sending a small group of students on the same opportunity along with the high school. So the proposal tonight is the middle school portion of the overnight trip. Again, previously, the high school portion has been approved.
Trying to get kind of an overview of, of the details of the trip?
Sure. So travel on Friday night. Saturday, they spend about four hours learning some jazz band skills. They go to some learning sessions with other middle school and high school students across the state. Then they have a chance to see, participate in their performance, and then see everyone.
And then 16 middle school, that's what the memo's saying, and one chapter on for those 16.
Good luck, it lights out at 10 p.m.
We will strictly.
We will. Very much.
All right, okay.
I don't want to sleep.
Make it up.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the MMS extended field trip.
Okay.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve the extended field trip request for our middle school jazz band students. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
Should we say good luck? Go over there with the chapter.
All right, last item of new business is we have an election coming up in April, and we need to determine what board candidates appear on the ballot.
So we have two candidates running for two spots, John Doomer and Rick.
Our two incumbents, God bless you.
Their terms are both up, but both are running, and we didn't get any other community members running. So it's choosing between the two of them, and their both, names are both listed on a piece of paper, as to who would be the further, the first name picked will be listed first on the ballot.
I'm fine with alphabetical if that matters.
Let's pick, I don't know.
Julia, is he wanting to sign? Is he trying to picking, or do you want to be the picker?
Yes, you will.
Oh, yeah.
This is somewhat informal, but first on the ballot is Mr. John Doomer. If I can fault, that may be Mr. Mullins second. And it is alphabetical. So, all right, thank you for that, and thank you to both of you for reup. All right, that concludes our, oh, sorry, new business. A couple of compulsory things here on miscellaneous. Staffing report shows up first.
I'm making that motion to approve the staffing reports as presented.
Rick's motion seconded by Ed to approve the staffing report the way it's included. Questions from anyone? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Gifts and donations are following. I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Thank you.
Ooh, la, a second, so we're going to grab Jennifer for that. John's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our gifts and donations. Thirty-one thousand dollars from our generous community that we are internally indebted to. So thank you for that, folks. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Meeting dates, Mr. Donovan, what do you got?
We have a couple upcoming meetings. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is two weeks from tonight, on Monday, January 27th, at our regular location and our regular 6:30 p.m. start time. On Monday, the 20th, we have a joint curriculum and technology committee meeting at 6:30. On Tuesday, the 21st through the Friday, the 24th, is the state convention. We'll circle back to that in just a minute, but that's coming up next week. On Wednesday, January 29th, we have a policy committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. And on Monday, February 3rd, we have two committee meetings. We start with a, at 6:30 with a joint curriculum and technology committee meeting. And that one starts at 6:30. And then the HR committee will meet at 7:30 p.m. or immediately following the curriculum and technology committee meeting. We do need to schedule a finance committee meeting for sometime in February. I don't know if people want to look at dates now, or if you want, finance committee want, Ross and I to look at some possible dates and send them out to the committee members?
Are you thinking like the week after our January board meeting? Would that be time enough to dial into?
Yeah, between the, the next board meeting and the first board meeting in February is what we'd be shooting for.
Let's all think toward that first week in February, then we can dial into it, the 27th of January. That sound right?
Yes, the 27th is a Monday, so either that week or the probably.
That was my question, the following week in February, is that time enough? Would that precede the next board meeting then? Okay.
That would, there's a two-week stretch there where we should fit that one in. And then, board members should have gotten an email from the State School Board Association that WASP Day at the Capitol is coming up in March, on March 12th. So if any board members are interested in taking part in that, there's, the email that you got should have a link to register for that. It's an opportunity for board members who can cross the state to go meet together and have conversation with the legislators from your area to advocate for things that are important for local schools across the state. And then the one other thing on next week's state convention, I wanted to share that Joel is going to be presenting. Joel, do you want to share information on your upcoming presentation?
Yeah, glad to, and if you're at the convention, you're certainly welcome to attend. The breakout session is titled Calling All Board Presidents. It's an initiative that I came up with a few months ago, kind of driven by the idea that lots of our administrative superintendent, business managers, assistants, and, and some of our even principals and AEs and whatnot, they've all got work groups and support groups and peer groups and stuff that they utilize in their efforts. And it dawned on me that someone in the board president role could probably benefit from that. So I shared that idea. I started, I went with our Badger Conference and invited Edgerton, Evansville, Jamesville, and some folks that I know locally. And I thought I would launch this back in November, and it got off with a resounding thud in that no one was able to make it, such as I finished a picked a bad night or whatever. However, I reached back out to WASP and pitched the idea about finding a space at the state convention, and they just were enamored with it. And it morphed or evolved into a breakout session. So on Thursday morning at 9:30, I'm going to gather with whoever shows up, and I'll
And I'll facilitate, but what I'm really trying to do is get folks to have a conversation within their own geography amongst board presidents and just share things that work well in your district, things that you need a little help with. And I certainly do not have all the answers, but I know that a room full of board presidents would be an incredible resource for folks to draw on. And that's what I want to facilitate and kick off, if you will. So I'm going to do that at the state convention and then hopefully it grows its own life beyond that. I will reinvigorate or re-energize on the local level here and reach back out to some folks. I don't anticipate meeting real regular, but periodically to just share some things that, that your district either needs help with or excels at or whatever. That's a bit of a commercial of sorts for that, so. Rich is, Rich is going to stop in and share a little bit with us. There's a few other neighboring superintendent, neighboring board presidents that I know will be there, so we'll get off in a minute.
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to tend and speak to the importance of building that strong relationship between the superintendent and the board president and the benefits that that has for our entire district. That was all I had for upcoming meetings.
I got one more thing and I will share this before we go to executive session. I started this a number of years ago. Longtime attendees here will know that when I started this board president role, I tried to close or start meetings with a positive thought, with a quote, with something that we could take with us. And something came across me back here in December that seemed appropriate, so I'm going to share it. And I invite you to, I can show you where I got it. It's off of Facebook. As much as I'm malign that platform, there's a few good things that show up there once in a while, so. It's titled "One." It says, "One tree can start a forest. One smile can be in a friendship. One hand can lift a soul. One word can frame a goal. One candle can wipe out darkness. One laugh can conquer gloom. One hope can raise your spirits. One touch can show you care. One life can make the difference. Be that one today." So take that with you, share it with your colleagues. And on that note, I would entertain a motion to go into exec session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985 sub 1 and C and 19.82 sub 1, which is considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is the superintendent goal setting and discussion of a superintendent contract extension. We will not be returning to open session. Oh, I'm sorry. Read your agenda, Joseph. We possibly can return to open session.
So.
Second. Thank you. Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick. All in favor of going to exec session would be Jennifer?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Joe is yes. John?
Yes.
And Ed?
Yes.
And Rick? That is unanimous. We are in executive session, potentially to return. Sorry.